...order, please rise for the pledge. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
I'm going to, for two moments, hold off on public comment. We have a couple special presentations and there's a lot of young presenters here that you recognize and then you can... Okay, so we'll do special presentation, student of the month, elementary school.
So are we standing right here? I'm not really sure. Okay, so elementary student of the month is Charlie Boe. So Charlie, come on up here. I'm gonna read a little something about... Many of Charlie's teachers, and two of them, they combined and they wrote that Charlie is a kind peer to his fellow classmates, a wonderful participant in all subject areas. Charlie will work with anybody in the classroom and he's always there to be a very good partner. He greets his teachers with a hello every morning and a goodbye in the afternoon. And this is a big thing because we don't always get hellos and goodbyes. We just get the grumpy faces going by. So I will attest to Charlie's always very welcoming in the morning. And he's one of our fifth grade helpers that works in our kindergarten room. And then from me, I said that Charlie is one of those kids who will always be remembered as a kid who is true to himself. When I met with him last week, and this is interesting, he told me that he plans to be a baker. He wants to bake, he wants to bake big cakes and decorate them for all kinds of people. He has a very positive outlook on everything that he does and I know that he'll be baking cakes for all of us someday soon. I just mentioned to Charlie just a minute ago that...
Right.
Oh, my goodness. Mr. Judge likes to bake as well, but I told Charlie that he owes me a piece of cake before he gets to the high school for Mr. Judge. So I'm sure Mr. Judge will like a piece of cake at some point. Charlie's gonna open a bakery hopefully locally.
Great, okay.
Hopefully he can open it tomorrow because we don't have any good ones around here. But you need to stay in school for a little bit longer. So Charlie, we're so pleased that you are student of the month. Come on up here, we're gonna do a little picture. All right, let's see, we're gonna, over here for Mrs. Dudley Lembic, you can help me hold this. Got it? We're gonna shift this way.
You can come right around.
Okay. I don't want to get in anybody's way.
No, you're, no, no, this is your turn.
That's all right, I got you right there.
There we go.
Thank you.
All right.
They want you in the picture.
You want me in the picture?
Well, I'll take one for you.
Yeah.
Great job, Charlie.
Middle school student of the month is Garen Cochran. Garen, come up.
Stand right there, right in the middle. When I was asking around for a student of the month, I talked to Mrs. Albertson in the office and she goes, "I have to recommend someone." And she recommended you for student of the month. And when I started thinking about it, it was like the attitude, the positive nature of the students, we love to see. Her report card is littered with things like, "I enjoy having your child in class," always giving best effort. Garen is an engaged and imaginative writer. And when I asked Mrs. Murano about her, she said, "Garen is a thoughtful, polite student. She offers insightful ideas in class and is creative in her writing and drawing. Garen has an excellent sense of humor and often has a story or smile to share. It is a pleasure to teach her." And I think the other thing I see her regularly doing is helping Mrs. Albertson record the next day's events on the whiteboard that's outside our hallway that's up here. She's always willing to help out and it's wonderful, so congratulations.
I look lost, I know. I'm missing a student of the month. He's not here and I don't know why. But Highland High School Student of the Month for November 2019 is Richard Redner. Richard is a senior and is taking a full schedule of classes and he's taking three college-level classes, college outdoor, college composition one, and college economics government. In addition to his academics, he's been involved with outdoor tracks for the past four years. Specifically, he excels with shot club. In addition, Richard has been working at Lucas McDonald's since last year. His teachers describe him as an immensely reflective, confident, insightful, engaging, hardworking, polite, and respectful mature young man. Richard's progression from freshman year to senior year has been quite impressive. At some point, he acknowledged that he could either allow life difficulties and obstacles to derail him or he could dedicate himself to overcoming them. Clearly, he chose the latter. He's demonstrated a newfound maturity, not only in his academic attitude, but in the way he carries himself outside of the classroom. He is a testament to how much can be accomplished with determination and a positive attitude. As far as life after high school, Richard is still unsure of his plans, but he does know he'd like a decent, steady job and would like to one day become a family man. We're proud to recognize Richard Redner as Highland High School Student of the Month. I'll be sure to give this to him. Are you gonna take a picture of me home? Okay, I will take a picture. Thank you.
Okay, on behalf of the higher board of education, we want to congratulate again our student of the month. The hard work, deserving of that award, but congratulations.
Okay, next. You have homework to do, this should be your time to...
We have an order.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay, our next special presentation is our long-range financial plan.
Good evening, Board of Education and Administration and audience members. Tonight, we start off our budget planning for 2021. And just a brief overview of where the district financial shift is headed for next year. Always, we're here for the kids. Follow our mission statement. Students are our priority and with that in mind, that is how we will plan 2021. Long-range financial plan and budget. So why do we need a long-range financial plan? What is it? A long-range financial plan, when it's completed, will project three years into the future. Been my experience. When you project further than three years, like a five-year plan, things are distorted. Salaries, benefits. And then, once it's distorted, sometimes folks get a little concerned about what they're looking at in five years. So a more realistic plan is to go three years into the future. Why? The district is rated by Standard and Poor's. They're one of the large financial rating companies. And we're rated because we issue debt. We issued a bond in August for a lot of old bus issues and the most recent bus issue. So what it does, Standard and Poor's has a phone conversation with the district, about an hour. We go through many financial highlights. Our district financial advisor is on the phone with us and we review where the district came from and where it is headed. I have provided to me the copy of the most recent Standard and Poor's rating for you to review. But one of the things that we can do to increase our rating is to develop a long-range financial plan. And it's also, the Office of the State Comptroller recommends it as a best practice. When are we going to do this? Well, we're starting right now. Talking about it. And who is going to do this? The Board of Education, Administration, and our district financial advisor. So just not Lisa Gillette looking at where our expenditures are and doing a projection, i.e. assistance from everyone. So as I stated previously, Standard and Poor's provide the district with a financial rating. What, why do we receive a financial rating? Well, when we issue debt, a bond, and we're going to issue a $7.5 million bond within the next year, we want an A-plus or better rating. Why do we want an A-plus or better rating? Because when we go to sell that bond to Wall Street, we get a wonderful interest cost. So when we sold the bond in August, then that interest cost is 1.3%. Previously, it was 2.5, 2.9. So we want to look great. Their recommendations contained in the letter that I provided are listed here. We could raise the rating if the district were to continue to improve available reserves through positive financial performance and we're going to do that tonight. And financial practices exist in most areas, but that governance officials may not formalize or monitor all of them on a regular basis. That's why we're doing a long-range financial plan. So the board knows where we are and where we are going in the next three years. Okay? When are we going to start this? Now. We're going to review the reserve plan and hopefully the board will approve that tonight. We're going to look at the history of revenues and expenditures, what they reveal, what are the past trends the district has had experience with. We're going to look at debt service, budget, and schedules. Our district financial consultant will be here in January and he will review debt service, principal, and interest payments on construction. He'll also talk about the million dollars, hopefully that will be in the capital reserve at year end, and how that will translate into a future capital project within the next two years. So we can include that in our long-range financial plan. We're going to look at fund balance in February, early 20. And by March, along with the budget, we should have a first draft of a long-range financial plan. So as you can see, it's dovetailing nicely into the 2021 budget development process. Some factors that we should be looking for right now, we do not have the 1920 final state aid information. So imagine yourself at home. You know that you've been paying bills for the past five months. We've been using all the money collected through taxes. However, we don't know where we stand with the state. We estimate it around $13.9 million, but as of today, November 11, November 12, excuse me, the state has not released our current year state aid information. That always has me in some needles. We should receive that information by the end of the month and then I can provide the board with where we are financially, a fund balance projection. To do so now is irrelevant. It wouldn't make any, it would be a waste of time. We're going to be looking at 2021 state aid projections. Expect to see a change in the state aid formulas based upon the information that comes out of Albany. And I believe there have been some meetings that the legislature have been having, local meetings regarding state aid and any changes. We're going to look at debt service, budget, and projections in January. The unanticipated, unexpected expenditures current fiscal year and future. We never know if we're going to receive any additional students within the district. What does that do for class sizes? What are their needs? Make sure that we hopefully have funded appropriately. Just today, or within the past week, we found out that next year's TRS rate is going to increase significantly from where it is currently. So I'm very happy to recommend that we create a TRS sub-reserve. But again, that's an unanticipated expenditure for next year. Capital planning expenditure. In January, we will be looking at the bus replacement schedule and asking the board to adopt a resolution to put forward to the voters. Please note that that is three months earlier than we came to you last year. We feel very comfortable and confident about the recommendation for the transportation planning. And also, we will be looking at a vehicle replacement schedule for the maintenance. So those two will dovetail quite nicely going forward. And the last thing that we have to look for, the factor, is federal aid. That changes every year. Who knows what will happen in May and June? So just briefly, this is our budget planning calendar. As you can see, we're here November 12. We're gonna talk about, we just spoke about the long-range financial plan. You have on your agenda tonight to look at the reserve plan, review it, ask questions, and hopefully adopt it tonight. In December, the budget will be introduced at cabinet. I believe they've already started budget discussions about wanting to meet for next year. And we will be talking in January more about capital. And that's it in a nutshell. Does anybody have any questions on the process?
Lisa, did you say the TRS rate is increasing?
Right now, they do a projection. And the projection is going to be between 9.25% and 10.25%. Currently, it's 8.86%. The reason it's going to increase is one of the factors that they utilized previously is gone and they're taking up another factor. That factor is higher. When they do an average, they need more money.
It's just surprising, you know, because the stock market's so hot.
Oh, yes and no. They've also had a lot of losses in the stock market. So I believe they anticipated like a 17 or 18% rate of return and they've only received around a 7% rate of return. So that's another factor. Yep. So having that TRS reserve set up right now will help us next year in 2021 budget. Questions, comments, concerns? I'm very happy to lead the board down this process of creating a long-range financial plan. Thank you.
Our next presentation, your district goal. Can everybody listen to that?
Good evening, our public here, public watching. Ends up this is the perfect location to have this presentation because as you look to your left, I believe up on the wall, Bill Polk will set the trouble with not having a goal is that you can spend your entire life running up and down the field and never score. So this presentation, certainly I'll ensure that this presentation next year is in September. The importance of having written goals, certainly these are things that we've been working on. It establishes a foundation, maybe a firm. It ensures that everyone is rowing the boat in the same direction. And it really gives you focus. So these are goals in a school district, often it's almost like a living act, actually. Because very often, the goals are the same, or many of them are similar from year to year. And we did, we added some actions to this. So certainly, several of these goals are things that are always going to be ongoing. So you see, yes, we want to continue to support our students so they continue to grow in all areas. We've talked about last year and a little bit this year about our STEM program. We're establishing that, that's going to take a few years, really, to really get it established fully. A case we call program. We do a lot of things to support the emotional needs of our students, social and emotional needs, really. That is something, you know, when I started teaching 32 years ago, things like that, we're gonna see, it didn't exist. It's a new world. And certainly, I guess the Gelectus covered maintaining the fiscal stability. So I'm just gonna go through each goal and that is the only, I'm gonna attempt to not reread it these to you because then you can see them. So number of these things, we've been talking about for a while. When we presented, we talked a lot about math and math scores. So yes, we are, we continue to work on a key through eight math program. At the elementary school, teachers college, we've been continually mentioning that and continuing with the training on that. Aside from new learning standards and new assessments that are coming, teachers have been preparing for that for quite a while. We were up during our tour, Mr. Wetzel took us to the project-based room. And again, this is a trend in many middle school, high schools, and elementary school programs. You actually have a room set aside where students go to work on projects. We've been doing a lot, we've heard about high-tech high, that's all about project-based learning. With, through Karen Brooks and certainly, and our principals, Mrs. Dudley Lembic, continuing to work on data and making the staff more data literate so they can, they can look at the data, learn from it, and take action based on that. And we are, we're working right now, as we speak, with Holly Brooker, our public relations specialist, on a initiative, basically that kind of like a public service initiative to educate the community about the importance of the V-3E test. So that, she's working on some of our ideas right now and has perhaps why they just had the third meeting. I'll have a little bit more to report back on our progress on that. The second goal is that K-12 STEM. So, you know, when I, when I saw it here just three years ago, really, we didn't have any STEM. So now we have high school, we have elementary, and we've been providing training for high school, middle school, and elementary teachers to get together so that we can have a flow and a comprehensive program. That's gonna take a while to do, but you saw even today, the, you know, some of the neat things that they're doing here at the middle school. The third goal, as I said, I can't stress this enough, you know, again, these are things that if you've been in education even for 15 or 15 years, if you started 15 years ago, most of those things did not exist even 15 years ago. And that is the importance of education to continue to involve and adapt. So we actually just provided the QPR training. That was question, persuade, refer. We did that on the conference day to hold for all faculty and staff. I'm working with the presenter to get dates now. It'll probably take the rest of the school year and maybe even into next year to have training for all middle school, all high school students and the community. Also, on the half-day on Halloween, the high school works on what is called BMAS. It is a tool that teachers use, will be using at the high school. It's a pilot program to detect earlier students who have mental health concerns and things that we can address.
What does it stand for?
I'm gonna tell you what that stands for. That stands for... We're gonna get that off the top of my head. I'm gonna give you a moment, we're gonna get that for you. The backpack program, I have to say that it's amazing the number of faculty and staff from, you know, the members of all units, right up to, I know Mrs. Gillette working hard packing backpacks. Thank you very much. I can't say enough about the great backpack program. We are, have been piloting the ARCH program this year. This is for high school students on long-range suspensions. In about a week, I believe, almost all those students are gonna be coming out of the program. They're finishing up their projects based on their infractions. They'll be doing those presentations. And then instead of being suspended till the end of January, they'll be coming back to the base school in about a week. Yes.
The behavior intervention monitoring assessment.
Thank you. And I believe, I may have mentioned at the last board meeting, just to give you an idea, anonymous alerts. It is one of many programs like this. We have surrounding districts who have similar things. It is an app that will go on phones for faculty, staff, students, community members to allow someone to send to the proper person. It might be a principal, it might be a counselor, a goal based on what the issue is. That I'm concerned about my friend Sarah because this is what's happened. He's being owed by this guy Ed. And that's all she said. Now, she, she would have had to have picked, it's high school, this is the situation. So the program, boom, I will go to perhaps the assistant principal, the principal, maybe a counselor. And then they can, if they need more information, text back where this happened, what happened, to explain a little bit more. It's anonymous. It's to encourage people, it's to see something, say something. That is, we want to promote that more. And finally, as Mrs. Gillette covered a lot of the things, maintaining the fiscal stability. We want to provide the best possible education, give our students the best opportunities we can at a price that our community can afford. So the things that she covered in her report, and these things right here, sound budgets, fund balances, grading reserves, doing our long-range planning. And as always, we continue, not just in the business office, but also in the academic upside to review what we did. Because, as I always say, we always want to take what we did last year and make it better. Any questions regarding the goals I reviewed?
The ARCH program. How many students were in that program?
There's four students in the program. Three of them will be getting out in a week or ending the program. And next, the other student ends in December. And again, that's shorter than what they were originally suspended for. And then there'll be no one in there theoretically, so you won't have, we won't have to run it, hopefully for a while. Then if it happens that someone is suspended for something else, then the program would start again.
So currently, we'll have a full program and a, say, spring program, is that?
Well, at the moment, we have no spring. We might not have anything.
Currently, we have no spring program.
We have, we don't have the need for it at the moment.
Just as needed.
As needed, yes.
So if there's one student that is needed, that needs that service, we will provide?
Yes. Yes.
And feedback from teaching staff administrators, I mean?
I've gotten, I've received feedback from the students and they like it so much more than having a tutor. Meet them at the house or at the... Every student I've talked to said this is so much better. I haven't really followed up with the teachers yet. I thought they haven't come to me with any concerns at all.
Yes.
So the temp has been there?
Oh, they come every day. So the students, when they get there, they get there, you know, a little bit early before the program starts. So they wait about 10 minutes in the, you know, the testing room. And Miss Lambert is in there, Norm Lambert, that's our assignment. And she has a test to prepare the students, just are so excited to be part of this program. Because it keeps, as I, was my goal, that it keeps them connected with the school and with their teachers. So it is then...
Instead of being now chatter.
Correct, correct.
Yeah. It's really important. Any feedback from the parents, Bill?
Uh, no.
Communication?
Every, positive comments.
Positive comments. Nothing official, but when the parents drop them off and pick them up, they'll, they'll ask how they did, and they'll say, they echo the student sentiments that it's so much better than having a tutor come to the house.
That's great, that's good.
One of the positive pieces of feedback from a staff member involved is that because there's a counseling component, that oftentimes for the students on a long-term suspension, they come back and there's a lot of anxieties and fears about coming back after a long time out. But one of the nice things is in, in the counseling, as part of the program, they're able to work on that, and that some of our staff members feel that our students are better equipped to re-enter the building successfully.
We had some even students who start or going back to school next week, even said, I overheard them even talking to a teacher, and saying, is it okay if I come and say hi to you, say hi in your class, like even though that's not their teacher? And so they're making other connections with adults in the building too, which is really great for positive role models.
Excuse me. Anything else?
Okay, before we go into acceptance of reports, Bill, I'll now move the meeting up to public comment. And again, just for everyone, please state your name, and we'll entertain a public comment.
Is this a public comment about topics or a public comment idea?
We'll entertain everything now, it's just so you know, we don't have to wait for it. Good evening, everyone, my name's Eric Lovegren. For those of you who don't know me, I have three children in the district. What brings me here today to talk to you is I wanted to talk to you about a policy called Athletic Placement Process for Sports, which is under section seven, four, six, one. Recently, I had a daughter that I attempted, who attempted to go through this process. And in talking with the athletic department, I'm here to seek clarification about that process. When I reviewed the district policy, on page, on the first page of the document, it says that students must meet all the state mandated criteria for readiness, including physical maturity, fitness, and skill. The reason why I'm here, part of the reason why I'm here today is I was told that the board sets the policy when in fact it seems to me that the state sets the policy. Because it says that the students will meet the state mandated criteria, not what the board would be sectioning. So based on that, I'm challenging a piece of a process called the Tanner Scale for Physical Maturity. This is a scale for you, those of you who are not familiar with it, that is a one through five rating. Basically, the physical maturity portion of this scale has to do a lot with more sexual maturity than necessarily physical maturity. So you get rated on this scale, five being the greatest, depending on how far along. So for women, it would be the size of your breasts or pubic hair. If a woman has had her menstruation cycle, they get a rating in another way as well. So a lot of it is keyed on the sexual maturity of the child. This process that's outlined through the state, on the first page of the state policy, says that the districts will adhere to the guidelines that's put forth by the state if they choose to allow seventh and eighth graders to play up. Doesn't say that we get to change the process or make it a different process, okay? What I'm here about is that when I went to have my student, as well as other students, go through the process, they were denied because they said they did not meet this Tanner Score Initiative. It was told to me that this was a requirement. It's clearly written in the state's policy that this is not a requirement. It's written there that says students will be, a height and weight, a muscle mass, an evaluation of the Tanner Score, as well as an evaluation to which these students may be competing against in the sport of their desired section. This, this assessment was to be done by the medical director, okay? I had asked through the school district to have an assessment done by the medical director. I was told I would be given an opportunity to meet with the medical director. Prior to that, I had gone to my own physician with the form that is on the website from the school district that says to be filled out by the district medical provider or physician. I was instructed to fill that out initially. When I had that filled out, my doctor had signed off saying that my daughter could compete. I brought that back to the district, they said that that would not be enough, I would need to see the medical director. I was told the medical director would be made available to us sometime prior to the start of winter sports. I had not heard back from the district. When I had called again to verify that, I was told that the medical director would not be available until mid-November. So then I had, obviously had an issue about why would the medical director not be available to the school at the time of when this should take place? To which then it further went down the road to that we're reverting back to, it's a requirement for the Tanner Score when I push more of that into. So I guess my part, my process, reason for being here is to bring clarification to this. Clearly, there is a state process that is set up for this district to abide by, as well as any district. The reasoning for that, obviously, is so that every school district is being handled the same way, not one district being held a different way than another or different standards. There's definitely different things that can affect kids according to this Tanner Score. One is heredity, you know, some kids, they may not reach certain stages of sexual maturity until they get to high school, as opposed to some kids reach it at ten years old. I've been told this process is for exceptional kids. I have seen all the kids that are going through the process that could participate in the sport in which my daughter could play. Quite frankly, I'm not exaggerating, she would probably start on the team at the JV level. However, she's being denied of even seeing the medical director to even get to the next step. I'm not saying she should be guaranteed through a tryout that she should make the team, I'm just saying she should be allowed to at least be seen through the next step of this process. So I, I ask you all to review this process because, and bring clarity to it, because there's been some lying done in the school district regarding the process. It is known that for girls, that if you have reached your menstruation cycle, you are marked a five, which means you can participate in any level of athletic competition in high school sports. Which parents know going into that, if they get the, they can just tell their, say their daughter had it, and then we get marked a five, and you move on, okay? I had a conversation with somebody in this district, I do not, well, not name names, but it was after I just had my daughter evaluated in October, it was told to me that if you want to get your daughter there, perhaps you should take her back to the doctor again to get reevaluated, maybe a different decision will come out this time. It was, that was clearly implied to me to have my daughter reevaluated and have the score changed to what she really isn't. I will not set that standard for my daughter, that we should lie during this process. I will not set it for the team that I coach for her, that lying is a, is a way to circumvent the process. We should not have a process where we can have lying set up so that we can circumvent it. The sad thing about this whole process is that even if you're rated a four or five, these girls are being passed along. They should still be being viewed by the medical director, even if they meet this Tanner Score objective. And they clearly are not even viewed by the medical director, they are being moved along just for the sake of one score. The rest of that whole process should be taking place as well. So clearly, as a district, we're not following the state process. I have talked, obviously, with several, you know, my daughter plays travel sports and many sports, I've talked to many districts about what's going on in those districts. And I can tell you that they're surprised with which the pushback that is being given to us in this area, it's definitely out of the ordinary. And I'm not saying we should do what other districts are doing, I would never suggest that. I'm just saying what is occurring is not really what's happening, and I'm concerned because we're not following the process that's in there with the state guidelines. You know, I'd like to say I, you know, we, the important part about athletics is that we allow our kids to reach further, so that if a kid is capable and willing to, they should not be limited in their ability to take that next step. You know, I, I think it's important, part of sports is that it teaches kids that camaraderie, you know, sports is a main thing for the school district as far as developing school spirit. It teaches kids adversity and how to cope with that. Sometimes getting kicked down is not necessarily a bad thing for a young individual, they learn to cope with it, they learn to maybe cope with stress, and they can bring that to other areas of their life, not just in the sporting world. So I, again, I, I'd ask you to take a review of that process. You know, I, I do not want to see a process that gets circumvented. I don't think that that's fair to students that have gone through and future students that may be coming through this process. The second thing I wanted to talk about was, I wanted to find out clarification for a coaching process. So I had put back in?
Before you go, I just got a couple of questions on the selective classification. All clear? Originally, I mean, this came about, I'm going to say four years ago, and the board went back and forth to develop this policy. Back then, when it was developed by the board, it was vetted by our legal counsel. So I'm not sure what you're saying is, was true back then, or maybe it's true now as far as not meeting the New York State guidelines. Maybe since four years ago, they changed and updated a little bit, so again, that would have to be reviewed again by our legal counsel as we move it through policy review. Other question I had, just so I'm clear, you have stated that there is a form that the district has that you have to bring to your doctor and/or the medical director?
Yes.
And/or?
Yes.
So in lieu of the medical director, school's medical director, you brought it to your private physician?
Yes, because that was what I was instructed to do.
And the outcome of that?
Seeing the school website.
Right. The outcome of that examination said that your daughter could move forward. That's what he said. Did that also mean that she met the Tanner Score, she reached a level?
She did not. So she, she needed a four for JV, she was rated a three. And?
And at that point, you had asked for an evaluation by the school?
Right, because I was told it was a requirement. So it's listed on this form that it's a recommendation, and there's a Tanner Score Form for Physical Maturity, and it's listed as recommended on the school website. Both these forms printed from the school website.
I'm just reading the New York State requirements as per that, the medical director. The reason it falls to the medical director is because it's supposed to be, the medical director's supposed to assess the Tanner Scores in conjunction with the proposed players that they'll be competing with. So it, in order, so that, obviously, so the child doesn't get hurt, and that's the idea.
Correct, yes.
So your, your physician may not have that information, and I think that's the case of the, the, the other members on the team, the medical director has knowledge of the other members of the team. I'm not sure, this is just going off the state documents, I'm assuming this is why that priority is.
Correct. That, I was instructed to get it filled out on this form here, it says to be filled by the district medical director or private medical director for, more private medical provided for review by the district. So that's why my doctor filled it out, because I was instructed to go get the form filled out by my doctor. And then it's further states in the state process that there's a, a disagreement between the district medical director and my private doctor, that they should have a conference to speak about those discrepancies as well, that's written in the state policy as well.
And that, that's entirely reasonable, I'm not saying, I'm not questioning.
No, no, right.
The, the issue we were taking with the Tanner Score, I was reading right on the document here, is it specifically says that the medical director should take it, using their professional judgment, take into account the totality of the student's overall physical development, while determining whether or not the student is of comparable or similar level of physical maturity in relation to those they wish to compete with. And that's incorporating the Tanner Score as well.
Correct. And that's, that's a valuable idea that goes here.
Anyone else have any questions regards to the initial comments regarding the selective
Thank you. The, the second?
Give me more to that, we'll review that with the superintendent and see how we move forward as far as policy review going forward.
Okay, how, just so my familiarity, how would I find out that when you guys reach the decision on that? Because obviously, this pertains to whether what I want to do in the future with my daughter.
Discussion seems possible.
No, I'm not saying I need this decision. I'm not, I'm not, I'm just saying, will somebody reach out to me? Would it be in a board meeting minutes, so I should?
Well, probably through the superintendent's office.
What would we do?
And as an extent, she's does, you have, you still have the medical director in the school, that's your primary concern at the moment?
Well, I was told that would be meeting, but not take place eventually because it was a requirement in that since she did not meet that Tanner Score, that that meeting would not take place.
And then a question, because according to the documents, it is the medical director's decision, it should be the medical director making the assessment.
We'll, we'll review that with the superintendent.
Sorry. So the, the second thing I wanted to, to ask is, and I, and I couldn't find it anywhere, so maybe there's something out there. I'd applied for a coaching position for the district back in May. I was, I was told that when I applied for that position, that I'd need a background check, certain certifications in order to do that process, and that I should do that in order to get approved by, by you at some point. So recently, that process had been started back in May, there had been communication once again throughout the summer, as well as this past month. I was given the final decision today that I would not be allowed to be a coach because we do not allow volunteer coaches in the district. That was what was basically given to me today. Clearly, that's not the case, because we voted on that before. You know, it, based on everything that's gone on, I've had issues, obviously, with the athletic department, that's not a secret right now, because I've been pushing this process. If the people allow me to coach, I am fine with that. The bigger issue I had is that I was told this process was out there, I put in for it, I took training classes out of my own pocket to be a volunteer, to spend time with kids in the school district, and then at the last minute to be given that as an excuse. You know, I just asked that if there needs to be some sort of policy out there that says this is step A, this is step B, or you approve people before they take these courses, because it's kind of unfair for me now to have laid out late this money for a coaching thing that seems, after the fact to me, seems like it's indicative towards me, whether that's actually the case or not. I don't really know, but it seems like with me giving the response that we don't have volunteer coaches, that's clearly not the case. So however that, that may be, I just don't want somebody else to be standing up here again, in my position as me, treated just as unfairly as me, so I'm bringing your, your attention to these issues.
Regarding that, we will, I'm sure the rest of the board would want to get some more information from the superintendent in regards to why you were denied, were told today that you could not be a volunteer, a volunteer coach. So we'll review that with the superintendent. We'll review that for you. And again, you'll get a response back from the superintendent's office.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Is there any other public? Okay, we'll move on to acceptance of reports. Here we found the Board of Education, Convergentation, intent to acknowledge that you're doing and accepting the following reports that were presented at this meeting. Board of Ed, meeting minutes for October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen. October first, two thousand nineteen Audit Committee meeting minutes, Treasury Report for September two thousand nineteen. Our internal claim law report for October two thousand nineteen, and tax collection. Motion, please. Motion by Heather, second by Ed. Review all of the fair, opposed, to carry, under curriculum and instruction, our principal report for Joel.
Okay, so a couple of weeks ago, probably three or four weeks ago now, two of my teachers came forward and said that their class had a project that they wanted to do with the community. It's called socktober. So they collected socks in the third grade class of Mrs. Duder, Mrs. Moskin. Their students got behind it. They made posters. They decorated our school. They reached out to local businesses. They put boxes all through the community and they collected socks. Don't know if this made it into your board report because I was having issues with my, okay. I was having issues with my, my computer on Friday. As of today, before I hear there's a donation coming to us in a few minutes, I hear there's 372 more pairs of socks that are gonna be added. The students have collected 1,973 pairs of socks to be distributed to people throughout our community that are in need. So I forgot this earlier today, so I added it to my number. We're 27 pairs short of 2,000. So that was-
Twenty-seven people.
That was mentioned. My guess is we're gonna have 27 pairs show up tomorrow morning because that was mentioned on our announcement this afternoon. So the students were like, oh, we're so close. And one little girl got on this afternoon and said, we doubled our goal. We almost made 2,000. So I'm sure there's teachers that went and bought socks this evening. So I also want to just give a shout out to Honor Roll Deli. He put a box there and was collecting for our students. Our students went there, they delivered the box, they collected the socks. And so this is a cabinet that is in the front of our building. It's usually a trophy cabinet or a display cabinet. We took the glass shelves out and the kids come down every day and they, they tried to fill it to the top, but socks weigh other socks down. So they, it became a STEM project because they were like, you know, if we had something in there, we could have filled it to a certain line, and if there was a shelf, it wouldn't have made the, made the socks go down. So the glass shelves that are normally in there were taken out by me so that they didn't get broken. But with these socks added and the three bags that are in my office, I bet you this will be filled tomorrow. So once we have this filled, then we'll make sure that this gets posted on our website. But anyway, the, the local man in town, he collected for our, our students and he is inviting them all to a special lunch on him. So we will be taking, they had a big thermometer in the building. They went down and they marked it off every day. We're gonna bring the thermometer to his, his business. I think they're going on Friday. They were supposed to go today, but you know, the weather didn't hold out. We'll bring it down there and he'll get, he'll get a picture with the kids and, and we'll make sure that everyone sees that. So that's the big exciting thing. Got a lot of hiring going on. As you can see on my last page, I don't normally get to put that many hires in the middle of the school year, but we are fast and furious trying to fill some pretty important positions. So hopefully I have some names for you by that first meeting in December. Any questions? Thank you for the socks. Appreciate it. I will make sure they get it. Good thing I have room in my own.
Quick question. How will they be distributed through?
Well, I don't think they thought they were gonna have this many, so they will be reaching out to local areas of, you know, that, that collect things for those that are in need. We're also going, there's a lot of kids' socks in here, so as they sort them, we'll probably keep some kids' socks at the school to give out to students that we know need, need some socks. So some nice socks in this. I have to say, if you look inside this cabinet, there's some nice socks. Not quite as nice as Mr. Boyd's socks.
There's poor kids carrying that bag earlier.
372 pairs. The goal at the middle school for the, from the peer leaders, they took up this challenge for us was to get 200 pairs of socks. So they went way past their goal and thank you to Ms. Osborne for, our teacher for leading that charge. She's our peer leader advisor. So they took it on and did that. So it was a great process.
I didn't know how heavy these socks would actually be. I'm a little, I'm a little nervous that the cabinet's gonna break. Now that I see all that weight, I'm like, yeah, maybe we're not gonna do that. We might have to put some like cardboard boxes in there to like, to make it look like it's filled. To imagine the glass going everywhere.
You're trying to transfer it to a roped off section.
Yeah, right.
Or a lobster trap.
Lobster trap? That, that's in the next board meeting. I've got, I've got something in common with that.
So a couple of things that just like to chat about my report. We're very excited about the fact that we did get to the next step with the grant for the bike program from specialized bicycles. If that, if we get that grant, that's 30 brand new specialized bicycles to be coming to school. So the next part- What?
We'll need a new shed.
We'll need another shed. The next part of it is a video presentation, a three-minute video presentation. I already have talked with a friend of mine who does that for a living to have her volunteer come in and help us.
An advantage.
And hopefully they give us some advantage. And the other thing, since my last board report on October 19th, I had the honor of having the graduating class of 1964, 17 members of them come through the building, even though they did not graduate from this building, they actually did move to the high school, but they wanted to come and see the building and reminisce. And I was here with them for about an hour and a half. It was fantastic. It's the third time I've been able to do that with different groups of people, and it's so interesting to hear the stories and let them tell their experiences and sit down with them for a while. So it was very nice to do. Any questions?
What kind of competition do you have for the bike, the grant? Do you know how many?
When we first-
How many people will buy for this?
When we first found out about the grant and checked it out, one, they were interested in having us apply because there was no one else in New York State.
Oh my goodness.
Now, I'm not sure that that continues. Somebody else might have picked it up and they do want to spread it around. So we're, we're really keeping our fingers crossed. Hopefully, put out the good vibe.
Okay.
That would be great because our bikes, we're constantly requiring them at this point. Thank you.
I do not have any socks to speak about. Sorry, but I do have two additions to the principal's report for the high school. Last Friday, six students and four adults attended a multicultural education conference at SUNY New Pulse. Educators, community leaders, and students from across the region gathered to participate in professional development opportunities surrounding humanistic and multicultural topics that impact schools today. Teachers left with ideas to incorporate issues of social justice in the curriculum, and student leaders built the capacity to help lead clubs and organizations related to these topics. Secondly, on Wednesday, October 23rd, we held our second Lunch and Learn with a Leader session. Matt Barr, owner and master technician at TRC Auto in Highland, visited Highland High School where he met with 25 students and shared his experience and discussed various career paths in the automotive industry along with imparting some hands-on auto care tips. All students walked away with a tire pressure gauge too that he gave out. Special thanks goes out to TRC Auto also for sponsoring and providing student lunches for the session. Those big, I'm very informative and well attended.
And Mrs. Barr made cupcakes?
Thank you, Superintendent Bodoby. Mrs. Barr did make cupcakes for all the attendees. It was fantastic. Mr. Judgment, bring your spot. Who's our, what's our topic for the next session?
On November 20th will be our next Lunch and Learn with a Leader series. It's going to be co-presented by Nick Shannon, who is the director of the Chamber Foundation of the Dutchess Regional Chamber of Commerce. And he'll be co-presenting with an agent from State Farm, and they will be doing a session on networking and building your personal brand and your personal image.
How do you reach out to these folks? Like, how do you determine what topic you'd like?
So it started with just, who do I know that would come? Is where it started. And then from there, after we told the faculty and I said, if you have connections or emails, talk about networking, let me know, and I'm probably good for like a year and a half. Because our faculty loved it and they expanded their networks to allow for some really great learning opportunities.
So you got them all lined up?
Yeah, all lined up.
We do, and we extend the invitation to you if anybody can make it. You're welcome, of course. Continue to hear about it from us. Happy to report. And the last bits of both so far.
Hi, it was, yes, the, I really enjoyed the TRC one actually because I'm a fairly driver. I've had my license for about six months, but it was really nice to, you know, go outside and have a little bit of hands-on experience. We learned how to, you know, check oil, change windshield wiper fluid, check tire pressure. I have that little tire pressure gauge in my car.
That's works.
Very helpful.
Remember how to jump the car?
Yes, that.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Okay, directors report. We have some directors here, so if you have any questions for directors, we can come forward.
Could we have, could we have a speaker or maybe a seminar? Is Maria here?
Yeah.
On, on how you qualify for free and reduced? Would you be willing to speak at a future meeting? Thirty-nine point four percent colleagues. Almost a forty.
Yep.
Any other, you're good, sir?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I had one on the, on the bus where we went out to that initiative with the, that six-foot arm that would come out. Is that in operation right now currently? It is? Has there been any, you know, situations with it? Has there been any feedback as far as? I know we've had incidents where cars have passed stop school buses with that arm being operated. Does that cause any issues? Has it reduced those possibilities or?
So in the beginning of September, when schools started, we did have complaints. Christine Sorbello is driving that bus. So she was driving it on 299, and we did have some cars go around it and under it actually in the passing lane. So in September, we did have about three complaints on that. Since then, we haven't had any from Christine saying that she's had any pass or buyers at this time.
I can speak to, at the elementary school, she's one of my last buses. When that arm comes out, nobody tries to pass the buses. And when that, when it's just a regular bus, constantly I'm in the, the road trying to stop people from driving past those last couple of buses.
Which are likely-
Yep. But with that arm out, they're not gonna go past it.
And just to let you know, it's not just gonna stay in that one area. You're gonna see it move around the district. This coming week, it's up for DOT, so then it will be moved to a different driver. We don't have to take anything apart. The driver is just gonna move with the bus. So Christine was, you know, very willing to do that, and all the staff would like to try it, depending on their route.
Predominantly, the routes are the, are the heavy travel roads or highways like 299, 4455.
Yes, 299, 9W, 4455. I would like to, but it depends because there is narrow spots on 4455. So especially towards the Clinton Dale area. So I have to be cautious there if we can use it.
Is there a plan to purchase more?
Not at this time. It's really a pilot, you know, a pilot trial.
Would there be a possibility of grants out there for that?
I don't know. I'd have to look into that.
What is the cost? Just estimate it.
Ms. McCullough, do you know how much that cost?
Is it something that you can put on the buses or is it complete? Do you have to purchase it?
You have to purchase it.
Stolen onto the bus.
So this was $2,000. It is state debatable. So and as more, the more you get, they take off more money, you know? But we only purchased one because it is new to the district and I really wanted to see how much of a difference it made. Because you don't have a lot of main roads here. I mean, I know we have 9W, I know you have 299, but there's a lot of back roads we go on, which you wouldn't be practical for. They're too narrow, so they would hit tree branches for a car. It's just too narrow. It's not a safe thing to do in that case.
Any other questions for directors?
Patrick, I had someone ask me if, and you know, I don't know if we have the numbers, if there's a possibility of having a life skills class in the elementary level? Do we have the numbers?
You know, we always look at that, it's a year-to-year thing when we kind of look at cohorts to develop our programs. That's kind of how the one at the high school started when we were looking, we were gonna send out a cohort of five or six students. So we start the program. When we have a life skills program, usually that means that we've made the determination that they're ultimately assessed and they're kind of on a different track. You know, our philosophy is kind of being, we don't like to make that decision right away. Because you know, that kind of separates them from how we assess them and the track that they're kind of on.
Yeah, I didn't really have to answer her.
So we try to hold off on that. I personally try to hold off on that decision. But we have, within our self-contained programs at the elementary school, we do life skills components. So it's not necessarily what we refer to as a life skills program, but they are still getting a lot of that instruction.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to acknowledge the food services, the numbers have been really strong the past two months, and I know just from personal experience that there's a lot of experimenting going on, which I think is, is a very good thing. So good job, Brown. Yeah, elementary kids like the process.
They do. You throw away the apples and eat the Brussels sprouts.
Speaking of Patrick, that was a lovely picture.
Thank you to all the directors for your reports.
Thank you, yes. I kept trying to scroll. It was great, great.
Okay, moving on to personnel. O. The board would like to take personnel at the block from A to O, not L. And again, if you want to pull out any, anyone, you can. So A to O, am I correct?
Yes. Where's O?
What's your O?
It's, all right. I can't explain it. It's printed differently somehow. They didn't all, they didn't read, adjust the letter order.
The last one is mentor.
Mentor. And then from there, it's, which is on the system, the request for extended leave and then the teaching substitute appointment and the non-teaching substitute appointment, which is up. I can't explain why it didn't go back and, up that order. So if you, if you're looking at the computer, you're fine, but if you're looking at the printed paper, that's what is missing.
Okay, so we're doing A, which is technology, through mentor. Right, is everybody okay with that? Can I have a motion to take it at the block? Motion by Heather, second by Ed. Anyone want to pull any individual out? Any discussion?
Just a question, that's A to O, which includes the extended leave replacement, teaching substitute and not teaching substitute.
All right, yes.
I just have a question on the agreement with the Connors turn. Just if you have any additional information on that agreement as far?
Mr. Connors, for the last several years, has worked with, much like Parker has done with professional development specifically on DASL-related things and training with the transportation staff, with our teaching faculty. He's also worked with some students as well, like I think preparing for the career fair. He does some lessons with students on presenting yourself to the career people, how to shake a hand, how to make eye contact, quick questions to ask. He has, like I said, he's done training with transportation staff about- training with transportation staff about DASSA-related things as well as special education and escalation, de-escalation strategies. A, a lot of, um, almost more social-emotional learning type of PD, whereas Chris Parker's doing more academic or curriculum focused. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor? I oppose. So Carrie.
Mr. President, uh, we have our, uh, new high school nurses here. So Diane, volunteer at times. You can stand up and wave to everyone. Diane's our new high school school nurse, so we start in November twenty-fifth, and we look forward to having her as part of the high school and district team. So thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you all. I'm very much looking forward to it. So, look forward to learning with all of you and growing with all of you. It's a great opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Okay. Regina. Is Regina here? Oh, yes. Regina, stand up. Uh, Rafaeli?
Rafaeli.
Rafaeli. Regina Rafaeli is here, teaching assistant at the elementary school. Thank you very much. She's replacing someone who's on a leave who's in now the library. So, so Regina taking Marilyn Etchard's spot in the rest of the school here.
Right. She was doing a leave replacement for one of our PDA teachers before that.
Right.
Extending her time.
That's great.
Didn't finish the year.
Thank you.
Good, good.
Bella, you're up.
Hi. So, um, in elementary school, I was raised on Peter Kornell, email. She was telling me about, um, a recent assembly that happened where, um, the Energize guys, as they're called, came in, and this was a, um, a free assembly from Central Hudson. And, um, I'm not sure. She didn't really tell me what they, like, discussed with the students.
To be honest with you, I was in the middle of, I'm dealing with a crisis that day, so I didn't see them. But the kids were very excited about it, and they all walked out with a pamphlet about, uh, energy. So...
I'm assuming it's just general, like?
They loved it.
General information conservation. And I can tell just from my own kids at home, "Mom, you didn't turn that line out!" I forget my own lesson.
We love those kinds of presentations. Firepart really will get you too, when they go, there's, you all of a sudden have to do the fire drill of the tree in the front garden.
Um, following teaching conservation, um, starting at a young age, we, the elementary school also had their CLENGPIS assembly. Not sure if all of you guys have heard about CLENG. It's a program through Hannaford to help promote recycling and, um, all of that, which I'm super into. I'm sure environmental science major. So, um, that was great to hear about. And of course, we're super proud of all the elementary schoolers in their summer fundraising, you know, leadership and initiative to give back to the community. It was great. Um, in the middle school, as per my younger brother, he's telling me about, um, he's going on field trip soon to go see the movie Harriet, which I don't know if any of you guys have heard about. I'm very jealous. It looks like a very good movie about, um, you know, the life of Harriet Tubman, the stuff that we didn't see, and her, her role in, um, you know, the underground world and, like, early America. Um, also in middle school, um, the eighth grade is continuing their fundraising for the upcoming Boston trip, which was definitely one of my favorite trips through the school district. So that was great to hear. Um, in the high school, so the fall sports are pretty much over. Um, today is actually the first day of winter sport practice. However, we do have, um, some fall sports, um, athletes going to states. In, um, swim, we have Ashley Banker, Deitha Rosen, and cross country, Benito Margas, all of which I'm very proud of, excited to hear their progress. Um, the French club had their fourth annual BAV tournament, which I always look forward to on Friday. It's very, it gets very competitive, and it's a great fundraising opportunity to, um, to send the French students to Broadway and other trips and, you know, continuing their education in French. And we also had our annual powder puff game on Friday, which is another, like, super heated event. I was not there for either of them. I was on a college visit, which was very disappointing, but I heard a lot of good and bad things about it, which, for anybody who cares, the juniors won the powder puff game. So, so, I mean, I go, I guess I'm glad I wasn't there.
Maybe you would've made a difference.
I know, maybe, but like, I came to school on Monday to a very angry senior female. Okay. But that's, that's it. That's it, yeah.
Any questions for Bella?
Just how angry were they?
They were pretty angry.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, under business and operations, uh, reserve plan, it resolves the board of education upon the recommendation of the superintendent hereby adopting two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty general fund restricted reserve plan and re-authorizes the following reserves of the Highland Central School District as authorized by education law and general municipal law and reflected in the district's financial statements effective June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. A retirement contribution reserve, a reserve tax cert, a capital reserve for construction, and, okay. So can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sue, second by Ed. Discussion?
Lisa, could I just make sure that I'm clear on how much you're asking to be moved? Where, you're looking to move over three hundred fifteen thousand to retirement? And I'm not clear on tax cert and the capital. What you wanna do there?
Okay, so as of June thirtieth, the balance for the, uh, retirement contribution reserve was four hundred thousand.
Right.
I'd like to designate three hundred...
Fifteen.
Thank you, three hundred and fifteen thousand nine thirty-one into a TRS subfund. And that is a...
Okay, so it's not, so you're just moving it?
It, yes.
Okay.
It's within the four hundred thousand.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
That three hundred and fifteen exists. And that's a later resolution that you will consider.
Okay. And then the tax cert?
The tax certiary reserve...
You got thirty-four thousand.
Right. That is for any tax certs that the district receives end of July, beginning of August. Currently, the district has two, um, that are outstanding. All the rest have been settled this past fall. And the two that are out there, I believe are vineyard located within the district.
Okay. So what, what are you asking? Are you asking for more money today?
No, just leave it at that right now.
Just leave? Okay. And then the capital leave as is?
Yeah.
Oh, all right. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought you were asking to move.
Nope, nope, not moving anything yet.
Okay, thank you. I'm fine.
You're good, Sue?
Yep.
Okay, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose. So Carrie, budget development calendar, uh, to revise, be reva, be revised, board of education upon recommendation superintendent approve the revised budget calendar for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year as presented to the board at this meeting. Motion, please. Motion by Heather, second by Ed. Discussion? All those in favor? Oppose. So Carrie, budget transfer be resolved, board of education upon recommendation superintendent approves the following budget transfers for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year as we presented to the board at this meeting. Budget transfer number three four three four for nineteen thousand eight seventy-two, budget transfer three four zero three for ninety-six thousand forty-six dollars, budget transfer three four seven seven for sixty-two thousand dollars. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Sue, second by Heather. Discussion?
Um, budget transfer three four three, what does ESSA stand for?
Um, that is the new government, the new federal reporting. It's, um, every student succeeds act.
It replaces neutral left behind and...
It's going to require that the school district report in March of two thousand twenty our, um, expenditures for the eighteen, nineteen school year, and they have to be in a prescribed manner. So during the budget development process for two thousand twenty-one and through this fiscal year, we'll be, um, aligning the codes differently and creating new codes and doing more transfers. Basically, they took our accounting, set of accounts, chart of accounts, and turned it upside down. And we did it all.
So it's really just a geography of?
Uh, you're exactly right. It's geography.
I mean, just. I'm not trying to underestimate it. Okay.
The, I feel sorry for the principals next year because they'll be dealing with new budget codes. So we'll have a crosswalk and training, but...
And on transfer three four seven seven, there was a transfer for equipment? What equipment was that for?
Um, we purchased technology equipment through, through BOSI's this summer. I don't remember exactly what it is. Do you remember, do you remember what it was this summer?
Laptops.
Laptops?
Any other questions? All of the favor?
Aye.
Oppose. So Carrie, employee benefits and accrued liability reserve be resolved, board of education, Highland Central School District upon a recommendation of the superintendent pursuant to the provisions of section six of the general municipal law hereby establishes an employee benefits accrued liability reserve fund with purpose of compensating unused and unpaid sick leave, personal leave, holiday leave, vacation time, time allowance granted and low overtime compensation, and any other forms of payment for accrued but unliquidated time earned by its employees, and be further resolved, and board of education hereby authorized with a sum up to, to not exceed a one hundred fifty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars, be appropriated from the two thousand nineteen, twenty general fund balance and deposited into the employee's benefits accrued liability reserve fund, and hereby directs the district officer having custody of the district monies to invest the monies deposited in the employee benefits accrued liability reserve fund, subject to applicable restrictions imposed by New York State law. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather, second by Ed. Discussion?
On that one, so, we're looking to move money into that reserve right now or at the end of the year?
Right now.
Right now. So, do we have confidence that, that we have that funding and we will not suffer at the end of the year?
Mm-hmm. So let me just, um, this can be much higher for the district.
For sure, yep.
Okay. So I just looked at one set of employee, and I narrowed it down to those folks who were age fifty-five and up. And I took the value of their sick time. What if they walked out the door on June thirtieth, two thousand twenty? And that is what the one fifty-eight nine hundred represents. It can be much higher, but I feel comfortable only recommending that at this time.
So, two things. I'm sure you'll be looking to grow it probably in the future, but you do feel comfortable right now with where it's at and with that money going in there that we are still okay with as a general?
Yes, I do. Absolutely. I would not bring it forward if I didn't feel comfortable.
Thank you.
This is based on you projecting possible retirees? Is that how you come to that assumption?
Absolutely, yep. I look at years of service.
So it is money that, that has been budgeted for, for that potential?
Has not been budgeted.
Never been budgeted for.
Well, we had, we have to budget something for...
You have a little, you have a little...
A sick time.
You have a little bit that was budgeted in eighteen, nineteen, and we increased that budget in nineteen, twenty. I believe the total is like eighty-something thousand. Nowhere, uh, it's not enough.
So every year, do we overrun in that category?
Uh, we have for the past couple of years, yes, we have. We adjusted the nineteen, twenty budget estimating a number of retirees at HTA and HSA. This provides more insurance for the district going forward. So say in two thousand twenty-one, I know of at least ten HTA members that are going to retire, and I know that I'm going to be paying them, those ten folks, um, their accrued sick time. I now have a revenue source. I now have a source where I can take it from and offset that expense. You couldn't do that previously. You would overrun the budget.
You'll continue to budget there? You'll continue to budget there and have that reserve?
Yes, absolutely.
So between the two?
Between the two, going forward, you should be able to cover one bargaining unit. Again, this doesn't even touch the other two bargaining units.
Now presumably, if that were built up, it would be, uh, in a state of flux between, uh, the money for paying substitutes as well. Because it, it's ultimately an exchange, the same thing.
Once it's in that type of reserve, I'll let you have...
I mean, if you build that kind of a reserve, but can we, should we establish another one for the payment of substitute teachers and then use it to balance?
No, no. So at year end, we have to do an accounting, um, calculation called compensated absences. And when that number looks at all of the contracts, union contracts, including my contract, director contract, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and says, okay, if everybody left right now, what would the payment be? And I have to calculate that number. I was over a million dollars. So this one fifty-eight is just a drop in the bucket. But it's a start to get us where we need to be.
So talking, you know, similar to talking long-range planning, what do you vision for that? Do you vision that down the road? You're, you have your reserve set to a level that you don't need to budget for that?
No.
Line item?
No.
So you will always need that line item?
This district cannot afford that. You are so thin on your reserves right now, right where we stand. So to do that thoughtfully, we're going to have to look at the whole picture going forward. That's why the long-range financial plan is so important. Maybe in ten years, you can get there, but within five, no.
Is that the ideal and what the general practice would be, to have it in a reserve and not in the...
Absolutely.
Normal budget?
Absolutely. Yep.
Okay. Could you clarify for me why you wouldn't, uh, someone, this is unpaid sick, contractual unpaid sick time, right?
Directly to the employee.
And when that is in fact utilized, then that's also paid out in the form of substitute teachers and unsubstituted. So I'm questioning, why in a long-range goal wouldn't you set up two separate accounts, one being able to, to, you know, it's the same money in theory?
So that's kind of easy to, to answer. Um, and it's prescribed by general municipal law, and the state as to what specifically the fund can be used for. Um, I think it's thirty-six fifty-one is the, um, state law that only allows you to put what we're putting into that account. Um, again, it will be adjusted at the end of the fiscal year, either up or down, depending on the, if somebody from my list of fifty-five and above HTA members decides to leave the district, the reserve will be adjusted appropriately for that. I will come back next fall with another recommendation as to the funding. So it can only be for that employee. It can't be for the substitute costs of that employee. It can only, it's only restricted to what the collective bargaining agreement states.
In the long term, if we reset it to a separate account before the payment of substitutes, can that, that way you could put, you can pass, you transfer the money back forth, given whatever the trend happens to be. If we see a, a significant utilization of substitutes, then you can take your money from that compensation and shift it over to the substitute. And so you, you could maintain a long-term budgeting process and then keep the, you know, move the money accordingly wherever you find the usage. But that was just...
Anyone else? Okay, all those in favor? Oppose. So Carrie, reserve for TRS subfund be resolved, board of education, upon recommendation superintendent approves the creation of TRS sub... Board of Education, under recommendation, superintendent approves the creation of TRS sub-fund within the retirement contribution reserve fund resolution effective November twelfth, two thousand nineteen, and to designate three hundred fifteen thousand nine thirty-one, which represents two percent of salaries for members of TRS for the preceding fiscal year, into the sub-fund as presented to the board at this meeting in the attached document. Can I have a caution, please?
Go ahead.
By Sue, second. Discussion.
So this resolution, the passing of this resolution, just puts aside three hundred and fifteen of that four hundred thousand. That's all it does. You're not adding any additional money. You're just designating it as a sub-fund. That's it. The money's already there.
Any questions? All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, copy your installation purchase agreement be resolved. Board of Education, under recommendation, the superintendent authorizes the Yost County Board of Cooperative Educational Services to enter into installment purchase agreement on the district's behalf for the acquisition and installation of technology equipment cost not to exceed two hundred fifteen thousand eight hundred fifty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents, plus associated interest, legal fees, and administration fees for period not to exceed forty-eight months, to commence upon the satisfactory receipt of all equipment on appropriately authorized district purchase order issued for this purpose. Be further resolved, the superintendent is authorized to execute an agreement with Yost County Bosse's in the attached form and any other documents in the flavorance of this regulation. Can I have a caution, please?
Go ahead.
Motion by Sue, second by Heather. Discussion.
So we used to lease them, right? And now we're going with a different arrangement?
Nope, this is continuing that arrangement that you approved four years ago. Our lease is up this month in November. Um, thanks to Ms. Podash and the administration, we reviewed our current setup for copiers going forward that will be able to print from different locations within the district. We went with different sizes, and we also added additional copiers throughout the, throughout the district. So staff, teaching staff should be fairly satisfied with this arrangement.
So it's the same type of arrangement that we had for the past four years?
Yes. And we will receive aid. We are receiving more copiers, printers at less costs.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions? All of the favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie.
Thank you.
Sarah, you're up.
Hi. At the last meeting, when we were talking about our assessment, it was this report card. Sue had asked about comparison, um, numbers. So I hope this is what you were looking for, Sue? Um, this is a comparison. So let me, I'll just orient you on the handout here. So this is grades three through eight, so everyone together from two thousand nineteen. If we look at that, there's two blocks. The top block is the three through eight ELA scores. The bottom, below the dark black line, is three through eight math scores. If you look across the top, where it says all, that's all students. And I gave you our proficiency rate. So students scored a three or a four. For two thousand seventeen, for two thousand eighteen, and then this year's score is the first white box there. Two thousand nineteen, forty-two percent of our students proficient in ELA grades three through eight. So again, that's everyone mixed together. And then across from there, in Margrove, it's thirty-seven percent, and Newt Paul's forty-five percent, and so on.
This is exactly what I was looking for, thank you.
Okay, so.
This is great.
And then I did break out kind of our most, um, the subgroups that we, we look at most closely or that we have the most students in. I didn't put E and L students because we don't have many E and L students, so it doesn't really register. I didn't break it out, male, female. Um, but for the most part, you know, some of the trends you can see here, just as we talked about last meeting. Um, you know, our math, we really need to pay a lot of attention in math. Um, students with disabilities, both ELA and math consistently. Again, that's an area we're really looking at. Hispanic students is an area we're going to look at, although that also is a fairly small number of students overall. Um, we almost, we barely even hit the minimum number in many grade levels. Uh, and then, like I said, math in general. Um, but I have to say, you know, and when we break these down even further, I also break it down into elementary and middle school. Um, it's not a big surprise. Our elementary school numbers are higher than our middle school numbers. You know, our participation rates at the middle school are lower, meaning we have less students who take the assessments in the middle school, and that does impact, um, also across the board. But, but overall, in ELA, I'm fairly, I mean, I'm not comfortable because, I mean, look at the numbers. Um, but, you know, compared to the rest of the county, we're, we're consistent for the most part. Math, again, we have work to do. Uh, the next page, and we did show this to you to an extent in the presentation. Uh, the next page is Highland, Ulster County, and then state proficiency comparisons. So again, the way this is divided, you have your top block is ELA, the bottom is math. But then if you look at each color there, the first yellow or gold section there of Highland County and the state, that's all grades three through eight. Then the blue represents just grades three through five. And then the last one is grades six through eight. Does that make sense? Um, so again, if you're comparing Highland to Ulster County, we'd do okay in comparison there. But the state numbers, it's, um, good in some cases, not so good in other places, you know, so it's not necessarily consistent. So I, if there's any questions in looking at that, or any further comments from our last presentation, or certainly once you've had some time to digest it, or you want to send questions to Tom and I, we can get you information, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, that goes down. And then, um, we've had lots of great events going on in the last almost month since we met last. Uh, National Honor Society inductions were last, past month. That's always exciting to see all of our students be recognized for the hard work they do academically. Um, I think that same week, we went to the awards for excellence presentation through a study council. We spoke about that last, last time. Um, one thing that we had, our law firm, I don't know if any of you have heard about, the red flag legislation that Governor Cuomo put in about, um, giving schools as well as other authorities the ability to, um, go before a court to remove guns from a student's home or prevent a student from purchasing, legally purchasing a gun. Um, we had a presentation on that because it's, you know, it's legislation that puts a lot of responsibility on the districts. Uh, so we really wanted to be very clear about how and when and what situations would be good for, um, for initiating that process. I mean, our legal counsel essentially said, it's really something law enforcement does anyway. So if we can have law enforcement do it, it's, it's a better situation. Um, but in the event that we believe that a student needs to be limited in that way, it really would go through our law, or go through our legal counsel. You know, it's not just a decision that Mr. Zimmer is going to make, and he's going to go before a court and say, hey, take this away. You know, it really, it does have specific thresholds that, that need to be followed. And it is all also really for schools only about limiting student access, which really they're limited, um, for the most part anyway. But it's not something that we can go and say, this parent, we have a concern about this parent having guns in the home. It's really not designed in that way. Uh, but it was definitely good for them to come and, and give us that overview because I think we all were a little nervous about, you know, where exactly is our responsibility in that? And where's our liability if we do or if we don't, both ways? So, um, so that was definitely very informative. Um, Megan and the middle school did a great job of their career fair. Um, that now, how many years is this now? Five, this is my fourth, this is the fourth year. Uh, I think over forty-two different careers were represented at the career fairs. And students, what, what we get the most comments on, uh, from the people here representing the career is how well-prepared the students are to, to go through. That they have questions that they ask, they have to have a, they have a sign-off sheet, and they have to go. And when they go, they have to ask their questions. They, again, eye contact, handshakes. Uh, it's a really great experience for our students, not only to see what careers are out there. And every year, there's one that I certainly had never thought of before. This year, we had an elevator repair person. That's not something that I necessarily thought of, but of course, something that's highly necessary. Um, so it, it really does expose our students to a lot, gives them something to think about. And I, I think it's the perfect time in middle school for them really to see it in action as well as just be thinking about what, what is out there. Um, and we've also had two professional development opportunities. I think most of the principals talked about that in their board reports. But we had a half-day on October thirty-first. In that case, all three buildings worked on things very specific to their building curriculum development. Um, at the middle school, uh, we talked a lot about social emotional learning and really creating cycle or circles of kinship and, and connection with our students. Um, and then on the November fifth, Supernets Conference Day, Tom, as part of your presentation or your, your report. Um, but we spent the morning in the auditorium and had several presentations that all were around the idea of safety, whether that's social, emotional, or mental safety versus physical safety. But we started with the QPR training that Tom mentioned during the goals presentation. Um, we had a DASTA refresher. So this was district-wide, every district employee was there so that they, again, understand the process for when a student feels that they are being bullied or harassed, what they need to do, as well as some examples of what is and what isn't. Um, and then I went over the district's safety plan with the entire faculty. And that is on our district website. It's open for public comment. If anyone in the public looks at it and has questions, they certainly can email Tom or I. Um, additionally, we will be having a public hearing before the November, sorry, December third, Board of Education meeting, and then it will be there for adoption. Um, this is the public version of the plan. It's the district-wide plan. It is not very specific, very purposefully. It's really to indicate that, you know, we have committees in place, that we have plans in place. The more specific plans are the building level plans. Um, those are not public, those are confidential. Both the district-level plan and the building-level plans, once they're approved, are shared with the state police as well as our local law enforcement officers, our local law enforcement agencies, um, who are a very important part of not only developing the plan, but continuing, um, and maintaining that, that plan. And then the last part of our morning, Carol presented on cybersecurity. Um, so really taking that safety plan in another direction. Um, Tom and I attended a cybersecurity conference at Bosse's today. Um, certainly, we've all had incidences perhaps in our private lives where our information has been accessed or hacked. And so Carol gave some strategies and some tips for making our, our district environment stronger and more able to withhold, withhold attacks. Um, we'll be doing a lot more work on that in the coming months. The presentation we saw today, and I know Carol and Chris Maxson went to a conference about a week ago that was even more intense. Um, you know, it is really something that we need to guard against and think carefully about. Not only, I think, in the comments I heard from people, it was not only thinking about school, but it made people also think about, oh, wait, maybe I shouldn't have the same password for every one of my online accounts. But that's not necessarily the best, the most safe way to do it. I, I know I had a conversation with my mom about that afterwards. So it definitely has had an impact, and it was really just a start of the conversation. So we'll be doing more with that. Uh, and then, you know, observations are in full swing. Um, as you know, I do an observation for every one of our non-tenured teachers, and we're starting to have a fairly newish staff. So I think that's about thirty-five people across the district. So I'm in the middle of that, which is awesome. It's great to see, um, see the work that our new teachers is doing. And right now, I'm also doing just check-in meetings with all of our brand-new teachers, the people who are new this year. And those are fifteen to twenty minutes, just to say, how are things going in Highland? Do you have questions about anything? Do you have concerns? Um, and to let them know that not only are their building-level people available, are their mentors available, but certainly a central office. Um, they shouldn't hesitate to contact us if they, if they have questions or issues or, or concerns. And it's also an opportunity for them to talk about the great things that are happening in the past, too, so. That's what I got going on.
Thank you.
Questions for Sarah?
Yes. Uh, it's actually a perfect timing. I was planning, uh, I'm doing this as part of my report. I would like to review what goes into the decision to a two-hour delay or a snow day. So this is the time of year I usually do that presentation, and we almost had one. So the corner, the corner of a two-hour delay or a snow day, the conversations almost always start the day before. Uh, because usually you have some idea. So I actually was on the phone yesterday with Mr. Miller, uh, talking about today's weather event. The morning of a weather-related incident or something of that nature, usually I would receive a call from Mr. Miller about four forty-five AM. And by this time, Mr. Miller has already monitored the weather, the weather radar. He has spoken to neighboring school districts regarding road conditions. Kathy McCulloch is already, she's part of the decision, too. This has already spoken to other school districts. Um, we reviewed other schools, websites in the county. Uh, either Mr. Miller or some other staff member has personally driven on the roads to see what condition they're in. Mr. Miller provides all this information to me, and he does make a recommendation based on what we know at the time. Of course, the final decision is in my hands. Um, but this is something you have to pretty much decide. You can't hem and haw because pretty, by this time, now it's after five AM. And really, the, the deadline is about five fifteen because you need to notify, staffs start coming in. Um, some of the bus drivers are coming in, food service talks coming in. So you do have to make a decision. Um, if a delay or the closing is called, then a series of things go into play. So Mrs., I call Mrs. McCulloch, she notifies the drivers. I do the voice message, emails, and texts are sent out to faculty and staff. I call Mrs. of Dilemics, she alerts the, um, the administrators. Radio stations are contacted, website is updated. All of that happens in about five minutes. As always, student-staff safety is my number one concern. So I would always do my best to err on the side of caution. Um, and certainly despite all the information we have, this is not an exact science. So sometimes they don't want this to happen too often. You know, you call the two-hour delay, or you call a snow day, and then it turns out to be sunny and sixty degrees. Um, and that's never good. And the opposite's never good, that you decide, oh, we're fine, and then something changes. Um, because it, it is a burden. When I can, some people like this, some people don't, but I, I'm the one making the decision. When it's imminent, I do think it's helpful to parents in guarding, if I can call a two-hour delay or something the night before. Because I know it's very difficult for a lot of parents to get that call in the morning because there's, you're hustling, you're running around and then trying to get coverage for your children. So if we know something is imminent, you know, sometimes I will make the call the night before. Okay, we're gonna start with a two-hour delay. You can never be go wrong with a two-hour delay. Usually people are pretty okay with that, even if you're wrong. So. So that's really, that's the process of the snow delays or two-hour delay. And again, it happens, all happens very fast. I wanted to follow up. I know that Mrs. Gilmore had some questions. So I want to talk a little bit about the high school electives, the information that we sent out. I do have copies of that for the board, if anyone needs a hard copy of that. I do have some copies of that. So certainly, Mrs. Dudenlemic and the high school administration have, you know, gone over this. We've reviewed it, we've, you know, talked about some possible areas. So really, when we look at, you know, keep in mind, we have twenty-three electives. So in a fairly small high school, there are actually twenty-three electives, students can choose. And eight of those electives are new this year, based on the administration department. And again, there are the descriptions. I just wanted to note, so when you look at the room utilization chart, yes, there are rooms available every period. So somewhere, there is a room, usually more than one even. There is some room available, room or rooms, every single period. When we review over the each department, you know, the question, I believe Sue, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, it was to the effect of, you know, what, how big should an elective be? Is there a minimum number? You know, when, over time, you know, you kind of have, depending on the course, you always would like it to be in double digits, to be quite honest. So ten or more. Now, there are certainly are some electives that have less than that. There's some very specialized electives, especially the arts area, you know, where it's, you know, advanced drawing, five, whatever, you know. So you're not gonna have that many students, perhaps, who will make that cut. But when we looked at this, there's two subject areas, English and social studies, where we certainly could condense some sections and maybe have one more elective in each of those areas. The thing to be careful about is, you know, like in business, you have the law of diminishing returns. So you can't get too big or you start to lose money in the business world. So the more electives we have, it's still the same group of students. So you're gonna be drawing out from the other electives. So you kind of have to find a balance. But we are looking at, and I know Mr. Zerro and Mr. Judge are working on this, you know, speaking with those departments to see, are there some electives that you'd be interested in teaching? What would they be? And then we'll reach out to the students or vice versa. You know, what electives would you like to see in the areas of English and social studies? To increase those electives. I'm also in discussion with Dr. Corey. I spoke with President Brown a little bit about it. So we're gonna be setting up a tour for Dr. Corey and perhaps Dr. Shanker to come to, just to see some of the spaces we have for the possibility of if there's a BOCES course that they offer that's a little bit more hands-on nature, that they could host here. We have to do that soon though, because really, you know, they have to know if they have the staff and then we would need to know if we have the students who are interested. So, you know, for example, you know, perhaps utilizing the middle school shop area as a possible space for a high school course. Because, you know, if that's something, you know, for power tools, there is no space at the high school to do that. You know, you need the ventilation and dust collecting. But we have that here, that's a possibility. But again, it has to work in the middle school schedule because we can't just take away space that they need and use. But there might be some other computer courses or something of that nature. So I've met with Dr. Corey twice about this. And really setting, I'm in the process of setting up a tour with him.
When a new elective is offered, what is the process to get to that point? I mean, is that strictly, you know, an administrative decision with collaboration with certain teachers? Is the total staff involved? Is students involved in that decision?
For the development, to see what the interest is, the students are involved, the teachers. The teachers who would like to propose an elective go to their department chair and they give a formal proposal to me. And then I meet with them and review it and discuss the feasibility of running it next year. So it's pretty straightforward.
Right, right. I know I might have mentioned to a few people, but there was an article on OnBoard, back page of OnBoard. I think I mentioned it to you, Bill. It was kind of a keen way, I don't know if any of the board members read that article. An upstate New York school district went to their entire staff and asked them, what is your passion? What would you like to teach? And they developed a few courses and with collaboration administrators, staff and such. They offered some real keen electives that some of them were geared ten weeks. Some showed a lot of enthusiasm and they made it a half-year. Some even more went to a full-year credit bearing. Those that were ten-month classes, courses where our ten weeks were pass/fail. So it kind of opened up and broadened the opportunities for the students. Because I look at some of our electives and they're geared to certain, I'm gonna call clientele. I mean, like anything else. I think we gotta reach the entire student body. And I'm not sure if we're doing that, if we're restricted by space, staff or whatever it may be. But I really feel that those areas have to be explored to the fullest. And I did speak with Superintendent Bon Jovi in regards to collaborating maybe with BOCES to bring something back in and maybe shared with other districts. I don't know. But I really feel that we have to look at it, you know. We're running out again for, you know, making some provisions for the 2020-21 school year. I mean, we don't have a lot of time. Our budget process is coming up in two months. But for the rest of the board, if there's any thoughts that you have to share with the administrators and superintendent to kind of move that process into, you know, some type of formal setting where we can reach out to, you know, all our students. I look at, and I looked at, you know, as far as student enrollment, some of these electives that we had. And I had the same concerns you had, Sue. One question, Bill, is, are they current enrollment numbers?
Those are current.
I know in the past, we've asked for it and they were September 1st, which changed drastically one month into this year.
Those are current, the day I submitted the report. Whatever day we get it, I'll say that. Yes, it's very current.
And I know, you know, you look at some of our new electives, there's eight of them that are new. And, you know, four, three of them are taught by the same teacher. And you have, you know, you have a bunch of music electives, art electives that are not fully enrolled, are, I'm concerned. I mean, if you have an art elective that only has four or five students, and we're not really servicing the student body of one hundred and forty-six or whatever is in the senior plan or the high school. High school's got five hundred and twenty-three students. We need to reach them all, not just five out of five hundred and twenty-three is not a good ratio. So I'm concerned about that too. But I think we have to explore more. And I really think that reaching out to staff and asking them for what, hypothetically, what would your passion be? What would you really love to teach? Maybe even outside of their area. What would you really like to teach? And maybe there's something that's gonna pop out that can interest more than a handful of students. That's me.
I think it's the nature of the culture also of teachers bringing it forward and students speaking up when they have something that they're interested in. I think that's the biggest way that you're going to affect a larger student body. You know, so if there's maybe initiatives or ways that we can get that out, to really promote that, I think that would be, you know, one of the big benefits. And I know, like you said, that's the way it really starts now. But if there's any way to really continually encourage that.
I think definitely too, I mean, you do want a brand-new course. You need to let it have a year to catch on a little bit too. You know, so that, you know, they might not sign up for it that first year. But if it's something that the teacher is really passionate about, those first group of students are gonna say, oh, wow, we loved that class, we loved it with, you know, with Mr. Judge or, I mean, he made it so interesting. And then the next year, you have a lot more students that sign up for it. So I think that's something to evaluate as students are doing their scheduling too. Is, you know, are we seeing the interest increase in the following year? And I definitely think, in just even some of the anecdotal evidence that I'm hearing and seeing with some of the STEM classes, I think that we're going to see more interest in that next year as well because of the kinds of things that students are experiencing in those classes. But so that word-of-mouth can generate, especially if it's something, Mr. Brown, as you said, that the teacher's really passionate about. Students might not necessarily think they're passionate about it until they hear what the students are doing. And I'll share, one of my best classes I ever took, Mrs. College and Everything, was a comparative religions class in twelfth grade in high school. And it was all because Mr. Dean just embodied it, that whole, I mean, I love social studies too. But it was, it's still, I think back to some of the things that I learned in that class. He just, he had a huge following every year because he, he made it so great. I don't think it survived once he retired though, because it was, you know, it was his class, I think.
So would you have any input?
My only input would be that something else to consider is that student interest might be high. But as per like fitting it in your schedule.
Oh, yeah, that's, I'm sure that's.
Scheduling is always difficult. And I, one of the hardest things I had to learn is that you can't do everything. And, you know, a lot of, I have to fill a whole nother schedule of like full of electives if I wanted to. But most, I have a lunch and I couldn't fill it with an elective that I was interested in because I'm taking five AP classes and taking band and I have all the other things going on. So there's like, there's a lot of like, you know, this one group is mostly academic-focused and this group maybe is more to art, more to music, more to science. It was just.
I think you're referring to, I've heard that from Camille. I know my own son said that in order to fit into the schedule, they have to do up their lunch period. And I think Superintendent Bon Jovi addressed that, that it seems the same population. And so we're a limited population in excess. So understanding that, I guess, maybe our approach should be to look at the other population, the one that has more than one study hall or two study halls. And, you know, what the students who aren't engaged and have a full schedule. And what is it they want, what would engage them? And I think maybe that's where we should start with, to increase our electives.
We also maybe look at electives from surrounding districts. I know some of the surrounding districts, maybe they have more electives. So maybe we can leverage some of their experience too. Sure, they have electives that are more popular than others. And, you know, to, to, to my point, some of that might be the teacher. But to a certain extent, some of it is also the topic.
So we'll continue to generate from the students, all students, you know, what are some things you're interested in? It's all snapping fast. And then to the teachers, what are your passions? What would you like to teach? And then again, see what we can get out of the things that we can match together. And again, in the last, I've only been here three years. You know, we have a lot of new electives just in the time I've been here. And that's a testament to the hard work of the high school administration. I'm not the one creating it, they are. So thank you very much for that. And we, I know that we're taking a look at, you know, interestingly, like we looked at the scores, what are similar districts? You know, we're in the process of looking at schools of similar size, how many electives do they have? Because we can be realistic of how many electives we can actually reach. That's all I had for right now.
We'll move on to new bits of the Board of Education. We have first readings for policy, student voter registration, pre-purchase for district meeting, functioned attendance by board members, conferences, convention, the workshop, board self-evaluation of the existing school and community-based school facilities. As I believe we mentioned at some point in the meeting, that there is a committee that we put together that is reviewing our policies. And there's one board member, Mike Pacassius, and I, I didn't know. So anyone else has the opportunity to sit in, you're more than welcome. I think the next one's December, December 4th, I believe. So, yes?
So, yeah, so we started at the, you know, discussing policies. So we did start a policy committee. We certainly will have members who will come in as needed, depending on what the policy is. And certainly, we will send policies to different administrators or directors to get their input, depending on what policy it is. So we did meet, it was Mr. Dudenlemic, myself, Mr. Zimmer, Mr. Pacassius, and then, and Mrs. Jacobson. So we did review over, so we went through all of the, I went through all the policies. And basically, any policy that was more than five years old is too old, you know, is due for review. So we went through and we listed by series all the policies that are due for an update. So we actually went through, now, these are admittedly more straightforward policies. So we wanna go in order. So we start with the two, the 1,000 series are fine, they've all been updated already. We did all the 2,000 and the 3,000 series. A number of them were fine and they just, they'll get marked as updated and the date. And then the ones we have here are for first reading. So that means we made some minor, most of these really just a minor change. A few of them we've sent to our attorneys just to take a look at this. Or we sent to, like I said, to one of the directors, principals, is this accurate? We just wanna make sure that what we're doing, what the policy says reflects what we're doing.
So the one exception to that is the first, the student voter registration, pre-registration. That's a brand-new policy. This is in response to state legislation. That says that schools need to encourage voter registration and pre-registration for their students. We do that already in Highland, not before, it was even policy. We, the students have access to voter registration information in our office. So they can, they can come in and ask for that information. We have people from the Board of Elections at the high school to register voters as well, usually in the fall before, before the main election. So our policy reflects that. This district does not become law until January of 2020. But, you know, we might as well start the process now so we can have it in place in our policy manual by then. So again, that one's pretty straightforward. There's not a lot of discussion. It really just reflects that we're already doing, thankfully, what we were already doing is what was in the legislation. And then the others were part of the 2,000 and 3,000 series.
Okay, I'm not sure if everyone had an opportunity to read through them, but this is our first reading.
The first reading.
We'll hold it for second reading.
Yeah, so just take some time, just to go look at that. And then we can at the December 3rd meeting, take any comments you have and I'll, if you have any questions between now and then, feel free to call or email Sarah or myself. And again, if there's a few minor, more new changes made, I have one listed here. There's no action. But we think it's like the first reading.
Okay, we have a walk-on through our agenda for uncollected taxes. And that just got finalized, I believe, today, were you saying?
Yep.
Be resolved, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of Superintendent, authorizes transferring the uncollected taxes for the 2019-2020 school year to Ulster County in the amount of $1,577,005.45. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Heather.
Second by Ed.
Motion by Heather, second by Ed. Any discussion? Call of favor, and pose, Carrie.
Thank you.
Excuse me, now at this point, you just have to sign the form that's going to go up.
Yeah. Okay, come around, we have to sign that.
Okay, under old business, the district-wide emergency response plan, there's a public hearing at our December 3rd meeting for that, so that you can review, we sent the board packet, and we spoke about high school electives already. All right, anything for the good and welfare of the district? Open meeting, backup to public comment. Okay, closed public comment, motion to adjourn to go into executive session for superintendent's contract negotiation and personnel issue. Motion by Heather, second by Ed. All of the favor?